Good evening, everyone. And for those of you who frequent in board meetings, the order is going to be a little bit different tonight. And going forward, it was brought to our attention that perhaps per the Open Public Meeting Act, we're doing things a little bit out of order. So to be aligned with the law, the public announcement that I usually read at this time now has to be read at 6:00 when we open to the public and then go immediately into closed. So I've already read now the public announcement, and I will be doing that in the future as soon as we open. We then give reasons why we're going into closed. We then come back out into open. We close our closed before we do the flag salute now. And we go on with our meetings. So that would be the sequence we're going to be following. And before we do even anything else tonight, we have a special event, and that would be swearing in of Larissa Smith. Larissa has already been sworn in so she could join us during the executive session. But we always have the opportunity to swear our board members in to Todd so family and friends can wait to sit as well. So with that, if we can officially, for the second time, swear in Larissa.
I, Larissa Smith, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States. I, Larissa Smith, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of the Board of Education. And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-194-1. And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, the second time. And Larissa will be filling the seat of Roach Tabal, who had to resign because she moved out of town, far away. And so Larissa will fill her seat until December, the end of December. And then come January at our reorg meeting, Larissa will be sworn in once again. So you can come back again and see her sworn in. And along with Larissa will be Tanya as well, Tanya Shields. So we will welcome Tanya officially in January. And thank you for coming tonight as well. So with that, I am now going to turn it over to Dr. Lockland for the presentation.
Yes, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Tanami, who will introduce our speakers today.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm really excited for our presentation tonight about our partnership with Montclair State University. As a way of introduction, we're privileged to have Gina Perici, who's one of our fifth grade teachers at Dwyer here, to give the presentation. And as a way of just a little bit of background, as part of my onboard process this summer, Gina was one of the first teachers I had an opportunity to meet. And within five minutes, the excitement about this partnership just came across. And really Gina has breathed so much life into this partnership over the years, and particularly the last couple of months. And so Gina, if you would join us, and we look forward to your presentation. Thank you.
So I thank you for inviting me here this evening, to be honest with Dr. Tanami. I do have to say, I am, I'm going to publicly say, I am very thrilled, thank you to the board and both the learning administrations. It's been years that I have been trying to push the Montclair State program in the district. And this year, Dr. Tanami came right on board, and he had me out to all the schools to push the information to all the teachers in the district. And from that, you will see, we already have an increase in the amount of grants that we receive this year and how many faculty members have signed up to be clinical faculty. So I thank you so much, it's been a pleasure. So getting started, what Montclair State is. MSU NERSCANS, or the Montclair State Network for Educational Renewal. And it's a partnership between public school districts, the university, and molding the new teachers that are coming out of Montclair State. And we have, we have, we're lucky enough now again to get student teachers back into our district to mentor. And we have a saying, you know, education in a democracy is what it's all about. And how we are empowered to create teachers, you know, in the future that are outstanding and distinguished. So that's what the Montclair State Network is about. We have been a part of this program since 2010, just so you know. And the district does pay a minimal fee to be a part of the district. But the rewards that we give back as a district and as professionals is just way beyond what the price we pay now, it's quite a lot. So some of the things that contributes to the school renewal, you can see there listed, we get professional development for free as part of the network. There are some professional developments that they offer that you do have to pay a minimal fee for. But many of the professional development is free to our employees, okay? So all staff members. We attend scheduled meetings to discuss different issues in education, okay? In teaching, your learning, and adventuring. There's a summer conference that is offered for the teachers. And it's a full day conference. And even though it's in June, it's just a nice refreshing day where you're treated like professionals. They feed you breakfast, they feed you lunch, and you're getting great insight. And plus, you're networking with other teachers in the state, you know, who are part of the network as well. There are technology workshops that are offered, and there are annual conferences. We have teacher study groups that you can be a part of, action research teams. There are incentive grants that they offer out. Those are worth $200 to those who apply. Teachers as scholars at workshops, day workshops that they offer for teachers and for other educational professionals. And you can have the opportunity to participate in the national conference. I can't even say that I am thrilled because this year I was invited on behalf of Montclair State and also to represent Rockaway Township to go to the national conference. So it was just such a great, it was just a great three days that I spent there with other professionals. What does membership mean for teachers at that professional development? The thing that I have gotten out of it that I feel is most beneficial, the opportunity to network with other teachers in the state. I have made some great friends. And it's just nice to know, hey, we do this in our district pretty regularly. It's nice to see that, you know what? We do things similar. We're not out there by ourselves, like it's not just us, you know? We're just, you know, being able to compare notes, you know? And sometimes vent, but sometimes also share all the good, you know? It's nice to have that avenue to do that. And we get student interns. Right now, I have two students who are coming on Wednesdays. And they're working with me, they're working with my class. And it's a nice opportunity. Not only do they get to learn from me, but I get to learn from them also, you know? I mean, it's been many years since I've been to college. But it's nice to have that with my class and enjoy working with them. We have campus credits and of course the grants, which I will talk more about. So in order to apply for these grants, you have to become what's called a clinical faculty member. It's an online application on their website. They need a letter of recommendation. Any staff member needs a letter of recommendation from an administrator. And they have to take these three mini workshops, and they're listed here. All of which we have been fortunate enough to host here in our district. So one was hosted in the fall, in October. One will be in the winter, and one will be in the spring. Now, those workshops are not only open to the teachers here at Rockaway Township, but any of the districts who are part of the network. And if you see on that flyer that I brought out, there's a Matthew Art of New Jersey, it shows you there what other districts are part of the Montclair State Network. By becoming a clinical faculty member, you can teach workshops for the network. We have several teachers in this district who can take advantage of that and use workshops for their network. We have two coming, in fact, later on in the slide, but I'll just mention it now. We have two, one was held in October, and there are two being held in district in November, coming out of the two weeks, okay? Grants, that's always a positive one. You can give money handed to you for a special project that you already do. Or if you want to try, you can in your classroom. Serving on committees that they have. Leadership Associates Program, that's a summer program. We had three teachers from our district this year who participated. It's a week in the summer, you're working with other educators from around the state who are part of the network. And it's, it's just a refreshing week where you're working, you're learning to do a project where children can have a voice. And so it'll be a year-long project that you work on when you come back in September. So we have three teachers in our district who participated in that this past summer. And then the conference, and of course the campus presentations. So this is, to me, such a highlight, being able to get money to do a project in your school or in your classroom. So this year, because we went out and we did our, we called it what our, our road tour. Okay? Because we went out, last year we had five teachers participate and got the incentive grant for $200. Look at this, our numbers are up to 12 teachers this year. So right there, if you do the math, $200, you know, for 12 teachers, we have a nice amount of money there. On the other side, the study research grants. Those are two grants, $500 apiece. You're allowed $100 worth per district for that. So we received two grants, and you can take a look there. One is for our character camp, Thing Tank, which we have going on. So why not give money for that? We will have to present them at the summer conference. So the people who receive the study group grants then go to the summer conference, and they present what they learned, what they discussed, and what's going on with that. The other one is for a Lego lab that we're hoping to bring about at Dwyer School as part of our student network at Dwyer. Okay? These are some past grants that we have received. We have received money for our butterflies, a monarch butterfly initiative. There's lots of books there. These are a little tricky to see. You might recall last year, I sent in a little flyer, an advertisement, for the money that we raised, $1,000. Well, that was through one of these grants that I received those books, and I purchased the books, okay? A Long Walk to Water. When we raised money, we took it into another direction, doing service and helping others. And there's other things here. There's Best Fridays over there in the corner. There was a little skit done, it was Dr. Seuss' skit. And that was for a grant that we received. We called it Pro-Bot at Dwyer School. Being fifth grade and you go on to the middle school, we're trying to instill in them leadership and self-esteem and, you know, just good character. And so an example of that, from that $500, we did a skit on Read Across America called Sneetches. But with that money, I was able to buy the Dr. Seuss hats for them as part of the skit, you know, among other things that we purchased. So those are just some of the grants that we received. Other, other money, some of the teachers received grants for flexible seating. They received grants for technology, Alexa system, am I saying it right? Alexa, Alexa, not Alexis, Alexa in the classroom, so it's all good. My highlight this year, of course, was attending the conference. When I was at the conference, I was able to see, I had a bigger picture then. So the network for Montclair, the universities, helping, you know, working with public school districts to help better education. And the students, the teachers that are coming out of their college, well, they're part of a bigger network. Other universities across the nation who do the same thing. And they get together once a year at this conference or a couple of times a year. And they share, you know, the research that they have done. And I was lucky enough to be a part of a team to present at this workshop. So it was, you know, a whole awakening for me because I didn't realize, okay, there's a bigger picture now. And so I was able to see that, it was very exciting. And then these are some of the workshops that are here. And going back to the conference, I was very excited also because last year, as part of our Pro-Bot program, I mean, to reset others, be outstanding together, we called it Pro-Bot, we purchased these little Ozbots. They're these little robots that, you know, we have the children a lot with coding, with different projects. And they code these little robots, and they get to do these little movements. I was so excited because when I went to this conference, a lady was there as doing a workshop on these Ozbot robots. So I was all about it. So she was so good, she even gave me an extra half hour, one-on-one time. So I have all these projects up my sleeve, I just can't wait to get started on.
Do you have any questions, Dr. Prog?
So I thank you. If you notice, the grants alone this year came down to $3,400. And Dr. Tanami, what should be paid to be part of the group? Just $3,000. So we're ahead of game right now. And so hopefully, we encourage more teachers this year with our little side show to be a part of the network because the benefits are just so rewarding. You know, I was looking for something else after so many years of teaching. You know, you're just looking for something else to stimulate you. And I found it in Montclair State.
So you are the teachers who are participating in the grants. Do you think that you could bring them together and be here to present to the board?
I'll get them together and see if people like to share. That sounds like a great idea.
I just want to thank Gina, and I want to point out, you know, one other aspect. I think this is a great example of teacher leadership and shared leadership in the district where we can really turn something like this over. And actually, we haven't turned it over because you've been doing it well before we got here. But to lead an initiative, to inspire your colleagues, to support them in their work, invigorate them in their profession. So thank you for stepping up and for accepting that role over a long period of time and continuing to be so excited about it.
Thank you for your support. Your enthusiasm is contagious. And I'm glad you went on your road, your roadshow. Well, hopefully you'll have many more roadshows. So yeah, thank you on behalf of the board as well. That's great. Thanks for wanting to go back to the classroom and be part of it.
Anytime.
I can't move through the district if I'm on the floor. I'll be student. That's right, okay. All right, moving on then to public discussion. During the course of the board meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Rockaway Township Public Schools. The board reminds those individuals who take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address and to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operation of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of others, of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in the comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. May I have a motion, please, to open to the public? So move. That would be Mrs. Brooks and Mrs. Messick. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the board? Please?
I just realized.
For the record, can you state your name?
For the record, Gina Perici, fifth grade teacher over at Dwyer School. On behalf of the Montclair State Network for Educational Renewal, I'd like to present this award to the board and to Dr. Lockland.
Thank you. Thank you very much from the board. We look forward to many more. If no one else wishes to address the board, may I have a motion then, please, to close to the board? Mrs. Brooks? Mrs. Messick? Moving on to communications. Were there any additional communications since? Thank you very much. Moving on to the minutes then, we're going to be approving the minutes of October 30th, 2018. May I have a motion, please? Mrs. Cherico, Mrs. Brooks is the second. I'm getting much better. Okay. Any board discussion on the minutes? If not, may I have a roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Tilburg?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
I abstain.
Is that noted? Is it sounding?
Yes.
Turning it over now to the superintendent through board.
Thank you. I'd like to give my welcome to our newest board member, Larissa Smith. And congratulations to Mrs. Smith, and also to Tanya Shields for their recent election as board for the new terms that will begin in January 2019. I'd like to thank those individuals who attended our most recent parent forum at the Birchwood School. A number of themes were touched upon that included the volume and consistency of homework, paraprofessional shortages, parent support for parent instructional approaches in math, a school beautification idea, school safety, and the Alice Protocol, and classroom health issues. The input, the ideas, and concerns that parents share at our meetings are of tremendous value as we continue our efforts to meet the needs of our students and our community. Approximately 20 individuals were on hand the evening before school break, which I think is great. And it certainly demonstrates the commitment that our parents have to our school community. There are four additional forums that remain scheduled for this year. Our next meeting will occur January 9th. At Dwyer School will be a daytime meeting. That will be from 8:45 to 10:15. We are preparing our proposed school calendar for 2019, 2020. A copy of the proposed calendar will be placed on our website, in fact, tomorrow, so that our community has a chance to review and provide some input. We've worked this year along with the Morris Hills District and other sending districts to Morris Hills so that we can coordinate all of our calendars as closely as possible. Additionally, we've all agreed to additionally calendar for a second year, for 2020 and 2021. So we anticipate placing that calendar on our December board agenda for approval. And that in approving calendars over a two-year period, what we hope for is that our parents and our staff will be better able to plan and avoid any unintended conflicts with school. I'm excited to share that the district will embark soon on a new print newsletter that will be distributed to the Rockaway Township community two times this year. I said three times, but we modified that. Two times this year, but four times next year. Our newsletters will be printed and distributed by Neighbor News. And you can look for our first issue in December. Recently, on November the 2nd, the district completed an active shooter drill in each of our elementary schools. I'd like to extend sincere gratitude to the Rockaway Township Police Department for their participation in the drills. And in our drill, each and every classroom was cleared by a police officer and a school administrator. The drill allowed us to monitor the consistency and the accuracy of response by our teachers and our students. We were very pleased with the adherence to safety guidance and protocol that was exhibited by all. I'd also like to take the opportunity to commend Dr. Tanami for his organization and planning of a very successful professional development day. This November 6th, I know that he'll be providing some details in his report tonight. And just a final note, I didn't have any time for my report, but when I was visiting Stony Brook School, I got a chance to see that, and I don't think this is on your report, if it is, I apologize, the new cafeteria tables. So one of the things that we want to be very sure about is that our cafeterias, that also serve as well-for purpose rooms, have safe cafeteria tables that when they tuck into the walls, don't present a hazard. As you know, there were some schools that experienced tragedies in regard to those types of tables. So recently, Stony Brook had all their tables redone. They have a interlocking system to make sure that the tables are secured to the wall in a very thorough fashion. So they look good. That's also nice to see, see that they look nice. And that has been installed. And next time you're in Stony Brook, take a look and be sure to notice them. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Lockland?
Thank you for the newsletter. I probably mentioned it 100 times, so thank you.
The two-year calendar is a wonderful, wonderful. I know it was your idea, so thank you for bringing that to the consortium of superintendents. And I'm sure the parents will totally appreciate it so they can make their reservations early, and follow the year in teachers as well. Actually, anybody. So with that, we will then move on to the, I guess, the questions that was ready for the board.
Okay. With the threat of winter weather coming far away and the fact that we have a new administration here, we took quite a bit of time this past few days to make sure that everyone is aware of their responsibilities in the event of a weather-related change in the school schedule. So we updated our phone numbers and our phone lists. And everybody knows now exactly what they have to do depending on what the situation may be. During our last meeting with our architect, we started to discuss repaving the Stony Brook Barton Line in addition to what we had already been talking about doing at O'Brien. This project is still in its initial phase of consideration. But in addition to repaving the lot, we would like to address the repair of the exterior stairs of Stony Brook. The telephone project is moving along, however, not at the pace of its hope. So the new schedule, as we stand now, is KTM should be cut over on 12-3, the Board Office on 12-4, Birchwood on 12-5, Stony Brook on 12-7, Transportation on 12-11, and Maintenance on 12-13. So O'Brien and Copeland, as we speak, are the only two schools that have been redone and cut over and they're using a new phone system. We have a bit of an issue at Catherine A. Dwyer. It seems that in 2008, there was a line installed, and there was a phone somewhere in that school that if you pick it up, you will get a direct connection to the Rockaway Police Department. We have to identify that line before we can cut any lines. So we're in the process of doing it now. I was on the phone with our Altice representative. I was on the phone with Verizon people. And I've had it escalated in the state of New Jersey so they can look into it more quickly. And it will take, hopefully, a month for them to determine where this line is. As far as the HVAC improvements at Stony Brook, when we stand now, the heat is working in all spaces in the building. The architect made a punch list during his inspections on 11-9 and 11-12. The plumbing inspection for gas passed on 11-13. And they will be issuing the formal punch list on 11-16. And hopefully, at that point, the job will be completed for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Brooks? Okay then, that would be the board's report.
Good evening again. I'd like to begin tonight by updating the community about our recent full day of in-service professional development for our teachers and staff. On Tuesday, November 6th, as many as 300 teachers and staff members can be On Tuesday, November 6th, as many as 300 teachers and staff members convene here at Copeland Middle School. The morning session began with all staff engaged in some form of a Google workshop that we coined the "Google Sandbox." The overall purpose of this time was to provide teachers and staff professional development with Google that aligned with both their area of interest and level of skill development. I'd like to acknowledge Vanessa Waxman and the many facilitators for providing our teachers and staff with these wonderful opportunities. The next phase of the day included two 90-minute department and grade group meetings across all of our grade levels and subjects. Similar to our Google Sandbox, many of our teachers came forward and took on both formal and informal leadership roles to facilitate this departmentalized professional development. Finally, we concluded the day with one hour of various team-building activities in both the new and old gym. As Dr. McGloughlin and I indicated during our convocation speech, we are committed to prioritizing collaboration and teamwork. To do this work well, we do believe we must be intentional about creating and maintaining healthy relationships as we invest in ongoing professional learning for our teachers and staff. Overall, the feedback about the day has been positive. 203 people, which amounts to about 2/3 of the staff, completed our feedback survey. 85% of respondents agreed or strongly agreed that they were satisfied with the overall day. 81% agreed or strongly agreed the time in sessions was sufficient to allow for quality learning and practice. 89% of respondents agreed or strongly agreed the day was well-planned and interactive, and 91% agreed or strongly agreed the atmosphere was enthusiastic, interesting, and conducive to collegial professional exchange. Lastly, 83% of overall respondents agreed or strongly agreed the learning would be useful to them in their professional role. I am also pleased to share we have received very helpful constructive feedback. There were many ideas surfaced about using the team builder to kick off the day rather than end the day, and ideas about how we might differentiate the department and grade group meetings even further. All the feedback will be reviewed and used to inform future planning. Next, I am pleased to share our elementary schools are conducting spelling bee contests in all our 4th and 5th grade classrooms this month. The winners from each grade from each school will participate in the GFWC Women's Club of the Denneville Rockaway Spelling Bee Contest on January 15th at the Thomas Jefferson School in Rockaway Borough. The event will begin at 7:00 PM, and the snow date has been set for January 22nd. As was also, as was already shared tonight, I'd also like to share and congratulate Gina Parisi, Janet Moran, Maura Oll, and Stacy Waznuski, who were recently awarded a $500 Teacher Research Group Grant from our partnership with Montclair State in conjunction with the work around character education. We also received, as also noted, a similar grant to support the implementation of a Lego Lounge at Dwyer School to continue our focus on STEM activities. We congratulate and appreciate these staff members for their initiative and leadership. On the board agenda this evening, there are two contracts for two literacy coaches. These coaches are being brought on to provide job embedded professional development to our K-5 elementary teachers focused specifically on reading instruction. One coach will focus on supporting our K-2 teachers, and the other will focus on supporting our 3rd grade, 3 through 5 teachers. This initial phase of professional development will include four sessions. We will identify two host teachers per grade, and the coaches will lead 90-minute PD sessions that will include demo lessons, modeling, and debrief sessions. The four sessions will focus on the following four instructional strategies: mini lessons, conferences, strategy lessons, and read alouds. I'm pleased to have these coaches in place now so that once the literacy think tank committee makes its final recommendations, we will have a calendar in place to provide our teachers with four formal professional development experiences focused specifically on reading instruction from January through April of this school year. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge and appreciate the commitment and dedication of our technology department these past few months. As part of our preparation for our November 6th in-service day, we rolled out Chromebooks to many of our elementary teachers for the first time. Not only was this rollout conducted and completed before November 6th, it was done seamlessly. Here in Rockaway Township School District, it is worth noting, our technology infrastructure and devices are truly reliable. This is no small achievement. There are many hours put in behind the scenes to achieve this level of reliability, so I wanted to take a moment this evening to thank our technology department for their service to our students, teachers, and families. They have accomplished much over these past few months, and we appreciate them. On the horizon, at the November 28th board meeting, we will be considering the adoption of our 8th grade geometry curriculum and our K-5 English Language Arts curriculum. Also, our two think tank committees will be convening later this month for the third of four in-person meetings, and my November 28th board report will include updates about their work. I will also provide at that time the community with a preview of our plans for our next district-wide in-service, which will be conducted after an early dismissal on Wednesday, December 5th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Not moving on then to committees. Committees that met?
Policy committee met last evening, and there's several policies on the board this evening that it won't be on last night.
We'll be hearing them later, I'm sure. We don't miss that, okay? There's the policy, anybody else?
The curriculum committee, you met yesterday, and most of what was talked about, with Dr. Mayne and her university cover, so just add them.
Our report from the negotiations point, we, the board, that considered board of the district, have received, the administration has received the suggested, salary guides, sorry, it's not one, my salary guides, and they are now at the junior school boards just to review. And hopefully, you know, within a month or even before that, we can absolutely, once the RTEA applies with its membership, we would then present it to the board for vote for a board approval. So that's coming, I'll be by the end of November.
Any other committee reports?
I don't have a report, but if there's any way that we can set up operations moving, moving into the school year, again, that would be myself, Rachel, and Lisa. So we can set up operations.
You'll sign that meeting through?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Moving on then to recommended for board action. First section is personnel, beginning on page 4, ending on page 5. Per law, there'll be no public discussion. Discussion was held during executive session. Now I have then a motion, please. Okay, Mrs. Cherico and Mrs. Helberg.
Did you, did you, you were to table?
First I have to get a motion. Now I can ask then for a motion to table on page 5, under employment, the first item. That would be the courses and instructors for the rate of pay for the actual school programs to be held in Dune. So I have a motion made by Mrs. Brooks and... Page 5, did I say page 5?
Sorry, it's page 4.
Where am I looking? I apologize. It's on there twice, that's right. Thank you. Everybody correct. So I'm going to table both of those. One on page 4, which you can find right under number 1, and then one on page 5, which is under number 3. So we're tabling them both. Can we just have that one motion? So moved. So moved, Mrs. Brooks? Mrs. Maluzak, seconded. Seconded, okay. Thank you. So that motion now will then be tabled, and we will now be voting on everything else. May I have a roll call, please? Yes, Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes.
Moving on to HIB on page 6. Now I have a motion, please. So moved. Second, Mrs. Brooks and Mrs. Cherico. Okay, so we are then voting on number 8 as unconfirmed, number 9 as unconfirmed, and number 10 as being unconfirmed. Then a roll call, please. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes.
Moving on, number 2 will be voted on at the next meeting. Moving on to education, may I have a motion, please? So moved. Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Cherico. Going from page 6 to page 7, any board discussion? If anyone from the public wishes to make a comment, I can open it up to the public. If not, may I have a roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes.
Moving on to special education, starting on page 7, going over to PTT. May I have a motion, please? So moved. Mrs. Brooks? Mrs. Maluzak? Any board discussion?
I have a question. Sort of an explanation. 1 and 2, are those just approving contracts and concluding them?
No, those are, we have a staff member who is on leave, and those will be contracted people to fill the gap during that time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board questions or comments? If not, I can open to the public. All right, let's have a roll call, please. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes.
Moving on to administration, starting on page 8, going over to, I believe it's 10. To page 11. May I have a motion, please? So moved. Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Maluzak, second. Board discussion?
I have a question. Can you explain number 1? Took out. Hey, T, I brought this.
I have a question about non-public technology.
Can you explain what it is?
Yeah, we, the district is non-public schools in Rockaway, and we're sort of like past through, we administer money that the state gives to school. We keep it. We have to order the items, pay for the items out of their funds, it's in our fund 20. So it's just like a pay-asse to account. I take the state's money, they're allowed to spend it, we pay them to spend it, because it's really a pain to return, and we have for technology, nursing, security, textbooks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Not, I can open to the public? Roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes.
Moving on to finance, beginning on page 11, ending on page 12. Now I have a motion, please? So moved. Mrs. Brooks? Mrs. Maluzak? Questions? Discussion? If not, I can open to the public. Roll call. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes.
Moving on to policy. May I have a motion, please? So moved. Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Maluzak? Second. I will now turn it over to the policy chair.
Okay, a little surprised when you first read it. Sorry, I was like, okay. There are several policies for a first reading, and basically, we're just re-adopting a lot of that part of Dr. McGloughlin's merit goals on looking at several 3,000, 4,000, 5,000. So that's starting with needs. The assignment of pupils, there was no changes, just being re-adopted, but it needs two readings. The reason it was looked at is because there's going to be a reg added to that policy. So that goes back online, you don't need to approve the reg, it's just going to be added. Withdrawal from school, there's no changes to that. Late arrival and early dismissal also has no changes. Tardiness, there's a couple changes, we took out the first paragraph that was currently in the policy, and excuse and unexcused, still the gradations, just unexcused. And then immunizations, no changes, and treatment of asthma, there's also no changes. The literature will need to be re-adopted. The second read, the four policies, no changes to the eighth, we had the first reading. The last meeting, it's going to go secondary numbers.
So the policies that are on number 1 are on the website then, shown in draft form?
They will be issued tomorrow.
Okay, and then they won't be in effect again until we vote on it at the next meeting anyway, so we shouldn't have any concerns between now and then, you know, please roll call that. Any questions from the policy chair?
Can I just add that there were two, two other policies that will be on for first reading at our next meeting? One about visiting animals?
Live animals.
Live animals in the schools. And the other one will be a new law that was passed in regard to staff protections, and so that will also be on for first reading in the next meeting.
For domestic lives. Thank you.
I do have a question. Just with regards to policy 5120 for the assignment of pupils, was there any conversation regarding this policy if we had to rezone Rockaway District? Would this be the policy that basically would be abided by? You know, for, if there's a possibility. We know that we have new, you know, townhouses and homes that are being built right now, and home schools. So I just wanted to make sure that we're looking at this on a full scale.
I don't think it would, my own opinion is, I don't think it would necessitate a change to this process because people would still be assigned to a homeschool, homeschools could change. But if they wanted, if they wanted an exception to that, this really kind of, the reason that we looked at it was because the regulation that is brand-new, which we haven't had, basically puts a timetable on the request that a parent has to make to the superintendent to go to a school other than the one that they are on for, and when they can expect a final decision in regard to that determination. In regard to, because we just looked at this for our mid-year budget review, and I went back and looked at the study that was done back in 2015, we are to, one student, the same as we were in 2014-15. So our, our population, as somewhat predicted, has come back to that level. It had a period of decline for a number of years. And of course, there was a projection in that study that talked about development, what it might do. I don't know that the numbers have quite been what they were predicted for. It has gone up, but I don't think to the degree that the demographer predicted it would. So we'll certainly keep an eye on that and be mindful of it, watch the enrollment, and see if there's any tick-up in terms of it. We do have, I do want to let the board know though, that some of our schools do have rooms that aren't being utilized. So we're not, we're not at total capacity.
Although it's not policy, just with that perspective, the concern mostly was Pondue. Where were those, we got the sudden influx because of the 11 new units that were going to be there. The schools closest to Pondue are pretty much at capacity right now. So the idea would be we had to shift, that's where the production was coming through. But Pondue, I don't believe, it's just started. I think it's over a three or four-year building plan, so we'll be able to see what happens going forward.
10 phase?
10 phase?
Okay.
Ten days, okay.
I have three kinds of.
Okay. And getting back to the policy. One thing that was in the policy about the assignment of pupils, and it was, it was clear that the notification of whether or not your child will be able to switch schools was now going to be in August. Dr. McGufflin explained that he wanted to make sure that the students who belonged to the schools that they were assigned initially at class sizes would then allow to have additional children because you didn't want to block out someone whose school it was, if in fact it's an award because you took someone else in. So it's going to be now writing, that good indication would be in August. And that'll be in the reg that's going to be added to the policy, right, or if you don't have a reg. Any other board discussion? Now I can open it to the public. Roll call please. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Mesick?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmi?
Yes.
Old business.
I don't know if it's old, I don't know if it's new, but.
It's business.
It's business, I have two points. One, Councilman Quinn had approached me again prior to you coming on to administration can approach the board about putting advertisements on school buses to subsidize any costs such as cameras and things like that. I'm just letting you know, that Councilman Quinn would like to know, would like to look into it.
I have experience with bus advertising.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it's an appropriate response, but it's a bust. They, there are head services commissions that promoted this for a period of time. There was little, minimal responsiveness to school bus advertisements. We looked at all different kinds of ways to promote it. So in a previous district that I was in, that was, we had thought that it might be a, might be a revenue source. I, the other districts that I know who have tried it have all had the same experiences with it. So it's not that we wouldn't want to do it and there really is no financial obligation. If we told Mammoth Ocean, I think they were one of the groups that kind of coordinated it, doesn't sound like they'd be in this part of the state, but they, they broached this part of the state with it. We could always say we're interested and, and we put them on buses, there's all kinds of pieces that we would do to safeguard it. The board would look at it, make sure that they were okay with the places that were being advertised on the buses. But unfortunately, they just have not found a market for bus advertising.
Thank you very much. And at the time of the discussions, the board wasn't unanimous in wanting the advertising. Never got to the point here where we said, look into it. First, we were waiting for the law to establish the parameters because we didn't know, you know, how big the advertisement would be to take up a whole bus. But the board never really, there was definitely a split decision as to whether we liked it.
The only advertisement we were ever successful in putting on the bus was the one that said, please advertise here.
It's somewhere. You had something else?
Yes, to Tara's point, having operations meeting, but also I have asked for kind of a state of the union of the bus garage. So I see we have a lot of bus drivers, we have a new bus driver, we have some bus drivers on leave, we have some things happening. I would just kind of like a little bit of a summary on where we're at, how many routes, how many routes are being run by multiple people potentially? That type of stuff. Thank you. So can that happen, you know, within a couple of weeks?
Yeah, Joan is just finishing up the D R T R S, so a lot of that information has been gathered together, so.
Perfect. And I guess this is old business in light of the news, which every day there's something else going on with the news. The safety of children on school buses in terms of boarding and unboarding, we just remarked, I guess, a school bus with cars not obeying. We went through this and I thought that's where you were going initially when you said Councilman Quinn. I don't know where we stand with looking for, looking for the cameras. The board, former administration told us that it was extremely costly to put a camera on the exterior part of the bus. And the downside was nothing but finance, but also that it doesn't capture everything. It can't capture a surround, don't, you know, really, you may not make this with a person violating the law. I don't know if it's something that you'd like to start investigating again because it seems like more and more news stories are coming out for children getting seriously hurt.
So we've, we've already started that, actually yesterday. We had a conversation on the update and our intent is to pilot cap, exterior cameras on some of our very high-profile routes, especially the ones on Green Run Road. And we'll examine what kind of images we get from, from the cameras.
Great.
And if it's for a while, we can certainly expand it.
Thank you for that.
And on that note, I don't know if it's our doing, if it's just a conversation you have with the chief, but I would like to thank the parts of the other Rockaway Township Police Department for having officers at bus stops. So I live off of Green Run Road, I can go to K D M, I have driven them to school. And we now have police officers sitting at kind of problematic stops. And they are just sitting there, they get out, they wave to the kids, it's really cute, great. Again, pardon the conversation, but I would like to thank them for that, to isolate, to increase people's speeding in general on Green Run Road during classes.
We might agree, the partnership with the squad has been tremendous and they've been extremely cooperative. You know, I already cited the lockdown drills as one issue, but we have frequent meetings. They are engaged and here, whatever we ask them to be. We just had a meeting last week to look at a, at a technology act together. So we, you know, they are, they provide their input, they listen to what our needs are. We've worked together recently in regards to topographic maps for each of our schools. So we'll be engaging with the company, we went out to see Morton's topographic map system. We'll probably be engaging with that same company that would be present not only in our schools, but also in the squad cars. So when there's a response, there would be a clear image of the building in the exterior and the interior entrances and the zones of the buildings. So, you know, it's been ongoing work and they've, they're every step of the way, so it's, it's been great.
Thank you. New business. Now, now I have a motion please to open up to the public. So, Mr. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Smith? I threw it over that voice now. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the board?
Sure, Brian Adams, RTEA. Today is recognized as E S P Day for the educational support professionals who are the custodians and the maintenance staff, secretaries and staff assistants. And we recognize everything that they do for our schools. They're not only educational support professionals, but they are essential support professionals as our schools walk along without them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, now I have a motion please, the board needs to return to closed session for legal. Oh. Motion to close the meeting to public comments. Sorry. Mrs. Brooks? Mrs. Helbert, thank you for reminding me. Now I can say that we need to make a motion to go into executive session for legal and legal related to personnel. We will not be coming back into open, there'll be no decisions made. We will come back into open to close the closed session, leaving that, we will do, but we will not be holding a, a discussion at that point. With that matter, a motion please. So moved. Mrs. Smith?
Second.
Mrs. Brooks? Go into executive session. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.